I was like, ooh, that can apply to a body I serve on. Okay, should we trust this clock? The clock is ticking. And say, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, thirty seconds. Good. Oh. Long as I can. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm just a little worried. 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 That's what I've got. That's what I've got. I don't have one. I miss you. I got part of your behind us. It's the only bench that we all five. It's like Girl Scout. I love it here. Come here and back. Boy, boy, that's not as pretty of my money than I bear. You know, those patches, you know. I love it so much. Putting up a pen. Very, very bad. Bad for me. I'm just like, oh, he was saying, always success would have my home. He's lost. Oh, wow. So glad. Well, my, uh, technically about the city council some period of time. Always that's more. My president is fired. I mean, this is, this is, I had the energy out there to hand it out later, but I just want to be able to do it. Are we still city council? We're not. We can't pass it. We're not. We're not. Nobody runs, you know, on a run. You, you, you're trying to. Do I still have any news? When there's now, I'm sure. I'm just. Good thing. Good afternoon and welcome to our first city council work session of twenty. And I, I want to do just a quick explanation because I have kind of expanded this agenda a little bit after conversations with staff. And so I wanted to let you know what, um, how I'm proceeding. We begin with electing new officers. Uh, staff is going to walk us through the process piece. And then I've added another piece. There are things that I have talked about with all of you individually about some of, you know, canvassing, monthly meeting, so on. And I thought we would just take a little time in this meeting to kind of talk over how that looks, how we'll do that, any feedback you might have. And also giving you a little preview of the mayor's monthly report, kind of how that's layout looks. So that's where we're going. And there are no concerns about that. We'll just carry on. So we will begin with electing officers. And so I'm going to turn this to Greg to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to elect Allison Lake a president of the city council for 2017.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? And could we vote with a show of hands, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Great. Thank you. Congratulations, Alan.
Well done, by the way.
Excellent work, Emily.
Okay. And. Now, in your first role as council president, would you make a motion for a vice president?
I move to elect Mike Clark as vice president of the city council for 2017.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Got it? All, any discussion? All in favor by a vote of show of hands? One, two, three, four. Looks like all eight. Congratulations. And thank you both. I look forward to working with you this year. Okay. Now, we will go on to the work session talking about process. And I'm going to turn that over to city manager first.
Thank you, Mayor. And we'll turn it to Sarah and Beth to walk us through it.
You know, oftentimes people track their resolutions by streaks, like how many times. And you're now on your second eight oh. So we're going to see how we can keep this streak.
We're two and oh on eight oh today.
All right. So we've been developing kind of a tradition where the first meeting back at the beginning of the year and also when we come back from the summer, we've been holding is either being kind of a goal session or a process session. And today, we thought, since we have a new counselor and a new mayor, that we would dedicate the majority of this meeting to your council operating agreements, which is typically what we do in the process session. And how that normally goes out, I'm just going to give a little bit of background, especially for those that are new to the table. How that typically happens is through the year or, you know, through a series of months, people will, individual counselors will bring up issues in the operating agreements that they want to talk about. And we typically catalog those and then we bring them back in this session. I don't have a list of those, but we have about four items that we would like to cover. A couple of them are clarifying items. A couple of them may be a little bit more content. So my plan is that I'll just start walking through section by section. And if there's something that you individually want to bring up in one of the sections, there'll be an opportunity to do that. Questions or answers? So the first section of your operating agreements, and just as a reminder, they're adopted through resolution. So any amendments or changes we make today, we'll bring back on a future Monday night for probably a consent calendar approval item. So tonight, today, we're not taking any votes. We're just going to get your feedback. So the first is really more around logistical meeting requirements. You know, it's really time of meeting, place of meeting, um, public forum and specifics like that. And the first item we wanted to cover was the public forum, which is on, uh, it's on page two and it's 1.05. In this section, we wanted to just clarify, we've been operating under a fairly new procedure based on a previous conversation with council that we allow boards or commissions, the chairs or their designees to, to come and speak at the beginning of the forum, regardless of the, the time they show up for sign up, if they're speaking on behalf of their board or commission, um, for the evening. But that has never been really formalized into your agreements. And so we wanted to kind of get a head knot if that seems to be working for you and whether that's something we should add in as a formal procedure. Okay. Any, okay. So we'll put that in there. And then if, if there is a concern the night that we vote, you could bring that up. All right. The other item on this section that maybe is a little bit more discussion is the section on minutes. You've had a couple of different conversations about minutes and how we would do that. And so today, what we wanted to do is, is walk through some of the improvements we've made since you did that. So you had previously acknowledged you wanted to see advances in technology in terms of how people could view by agenda item the videos and search the agendas by keywords. And so Beth is going to walk you through all of the improvements we've made. And then we'll come back and talk about any other additions you'd like to see.
I'm just going to start from, start from the main page and show you kind of how a person would access the council agendas. Easily accessed with one click here. And this is true for, not for live meetings, um, but for meetings that have occurred already and have been encoded by Metro TV. So I'm going to just go down and choose the December 12th meeting. And as you can see on the video screen, there are agenda items and you can click on any item.
Action. And the manager will introduce a topic.
This is a required hearing for the FY17 Urban Unitar Agency Supplemental Budget.
To move ahead a little bit or back a little bit, depending on where you think you might want to be.
That I wasn't really aware of and you guys might be aware of.
Those captions, as you can see, is occurring at the top.
I appreciate you taking.
Then down below here is the agenda. And the agendas are bookmarked so that on any particular item, you can click on the item and it'll take you to that agenda item summary. So you can follow along pretty easily. You can also do a search and I'm going to type in one that I know is on this agenda. And it highlights every place in the agenda where that keyword comes in. You can forward or back using these arrows. I know that that, there was one.
And that search function is only for the agenda that you have up there?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Are we doing questions as we go? Is there a, is there a capacity for this to index to AIS topic item from all previous meetings? So let's say any meeting where we talked about city hall and you'd see the agendas?
Not in, not in this window, in this system. But we do also save all agendas into Laserfish, which is a meeting management system. And in that, you can type in a keyword and it'll give you every agenda.
Excellent.
Set of minutes for that.
About 10 years ago. That's great.
Alan?
The video feed now can be watched by iPads.
Mm-hmm.
Like the ones that we have.
It's YouTube.
I have a question. Are they still cutting us off before the meeting's over?
I am not aware that that's happened recently. I would, I can check with Metro TV because it's something to do with their contract with the county. If we have a meeting that is on a county day or county is having a meeting at the same time, but they shouldn't be.
I know that used to be a problem. You get, suddenly it's cut off before the end.
Yeah, I think that happened on Wednesdays when there was the occasional commissioner meeting.
And then since I've been watching from home quite a bit in recent months, and I know this isn't in our control, but I just want to give feedback that sometimes the closed caption transcription is very inaccurate or dot, dot, dot. Have no idea what that person said. So I know that's a challenging task, but occasionally I've been like, oh, no, that's terrible. Who's ever relying on this is not getting good information. So I'm not sure what we can do to improve that.
Provide that feedback to the closed captioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
That was a great segue. So in addition to that, we've been kind of beefing up the minutes, but still not doing kind of the full blown minutes recording that we did in the past. As you recall, that was one of the items as we were working through the recession and the ways we could maintain services without, like still trying to save money. One of the things that we did was try to come up with efficiencies and technology that would help allow you to do all your legal responsibilities, track your meetings, but, but also we had to cut those resources in terms of minutes recording. So we've also done some research on if you want to do more than what we have. So in front of you, there's a two-page piece of paper. And on the backside of it, the very backside is what we're doing now. And so this is, um, in addition to capturing your motions and actions, we, we have been trying to capture a little bit more of the conversation and flare for that because it sounded like that was, you wanted to kind of beef it up, but it was unclear how much. In the front, you'll see these are kind of the minutes that we could receive from ElCog, which are very similar to the types of minutes that we used to do, which are on page two. And on page three is a sample of what would happen if we pulled the transcript from the verbatim minutes. And this, the reason why I want to talk about this a little bit is this was one meeting and I think it was 136 pages long. And as we've been doing research into other online platforms that do verbatim transcripts, it seems that this is how they're going to come. It's going to come as a massive amount of words and we're going to need to have somebody staff that to go back through and really attribute the words to the people and, and make it accurate, in which case we, we would probably just do minutes recording. So one of the proposals is, one of the recommendations I would make is let's go for a couple of months and see if what we have right now with the additions and technology that we've done are enough. And if they're not, then perhaps we would pilot for either a series of meetings if there's an issue that you really want to track more closely or if you want to pilot having ElCog come do some of those services. So you can see if that's really what you want before we move forward with any additional FTE to do that work. So that's, that's kind of where we wanted to see is are you comfortable with where we're at in going forward for a couple of months? Or do you want to have more discussion about that?
Chris?
I, I'm comfortable piloting for a couple of months. That's okay. The interest for me and why I was wanting to participate in the conversation about minutes is this is a really cool system for now and maybe for going back a couple of months, three months. But if, as happened last year, I had occasion to want to go back five years. And if I go back five years, can I do that with this system? And I realized, no, I can't. But if in five years from now, if I wanted to go back five years, would this system be able to quickly and easily accommodate my interest in something that happened significantly in the past? When I was able to go back to minutes from five years ago, it was very quick. It was very easy. I could go back to those minutes and I could read what was said and get a sense of how that conversation went. If I went back to the minutes as we currently do, five years back and they were in this form, it, it just wouldn't help me to try to get what I needed. And a lot of what you want is the intent of what people are doing, not just what they did. Legislative intent is a very important part of understanding how decisions were reached. And so if this system, five years from now, will be able to accommodate that desire to understand intention, then, then I'm comfortable with that. But for me, I don't want to get into a situation four years from now, say, I'd like to know what, what we were really talking about three years ago. And it's hard for me to do that. Or it's hard for somebody from the public to go back and do that. I want more than just what we did. I really, to the degree it's possible, want to know why we did it that way. And to me, there's, there's a little bit more meat there. And if this will accommodate that, then I'm willing to try it and see.
Meaning the video?
Yeah.
Emily?
Um, I have been really frustrated with the lack of minutes. And so I come to council and I take notes frantically. And pretty much they look like the one on the, the front page or the one you did long ago. And as both a constituent and just a reminder of what we did here, I would really appreciate the longer minutes. Um, in part because I think it's important for people to know who said these different things. If, if it's transparent and we want to know whose opinion is coming from whom, I think the, the longer, more accurate minutes would be very helpful. I found it really frustrating to go through the video to find specific things. And I'm, I'm a reader more than a hearer and a watcher. So I thought that took way too much time, whereas this I can go through quickly and highlight. So I'm in favor of the, the more detailed minutes. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. My understanding of doing this stuff in the professional world leads me to believe that Metro TV is doing the same things that they've always done with the broadcast and then they're uploading it with links to YouTube. Right? That's what the system is essentially. Metro TV has a, a short window of what they keep as video record of our meetings. I think it's either a year or two years and I can't remember which. But these should be able to be on YouTube as long as YouTube exists. But therein lies the rub of my question. Is there anything we can do to ensure that as a private company, if it changes ownership, which, you know, the pace at which that sort of thing happens in technology world? If it changes ownership, that we have at least some capacity to retrieve record before a change, you know? Just, I guess at least some kind of, some kind of process thought through for what if there's changes at YouTube? And what does that mean for our record?
I'm just going to mark that down as a follow-up on how we archive the video and the record.
Yeah. Because I, I have to say, I, in agreement with Emily that, and, and what Chris said, that there's, there's a great deal of information imparted by who's talking and the tone of voice and everything else that, that goes into our work. And I think some of that's important to keep over time because you don't know five years from now when you're going to go, gosh, I remember when we were talking about that and didn't, didn't we? And, and there's a difference, I think, between, if it were for me, if we're available on video, that's fine. That's good enough for me. And it indexes, like I mentioned before, so I can go back and know what date it was and just go look at the video. Great, fine. But, um, we want to keep something one way or another that has that level of detail to it, I would think, for, for a longer period of time than a year or two.
It, it is. Oh, Betty.
Thank you. We used to, well, we still say we approve the minutes, but we don't clearly have them at the beginning of a meeting. It's in the consent calendar. But we used to read them and then bring up, sometimes there were errors and we'd bring them up. I suppose there wouldn't be errors on the video because it's what we actually said. But it is important to know not only what's, who said something, but why. And frequent, if you vote a certain way, there may be reasons why you vote against what you apparently are for. But at that time, it, the, well, there are just various reasons and people need to know the reasons as well as, I know when I see the planning commission minutes sometimes, I want to know who voted for this and I also want to know their reasons. And sometimes that, we used to have all that, we used to have too much, I think. I remember one time the minutes of El Rapa said, Taylor was angry. Well, yeah, I was, but that didn't need to be in the minutes. I got that taken out. But anyway, it gave you, gave us a chance to, and some, and I, I like to mark things if I want to bring them up. And I know some people here mark things on the video somehow, but that's a mystery to me. I, I do think there was a value to having not every word that's said, but a lot of it. And I wonder now, is there, can we check on something that happened 20 years ago? Probably no way.
Not, not electronically.
But anyway.
Too long enough that we'd have to.
I was thinking about a particular meeting where, that was very controversial, that I would like to, sometimes there are reasons that you want to know why something happened a long time ago.
And we get public records for those kinds of information and, and have it in archives.
You have it somewhere.
Yeah.
That reminds me of something else. I remember when we voted to have a person who did no other work except, I know Beth does a lot for us, but no other work except act as secretary to the city council. Remember that? That's why Margaret was hired, but as soon as she was hired, she was assigned different duties. But I remember Bonnie Bettman made the motion and we passed it unanimously and it never happened. So after that, I thought I could call up and say, ask that person who was working for the eight of us, ask, when did we do something? And the first time I called, she said, I don't know anything about that. Beth does all the council stuff. And, and Beth does, but you, you do other things too.
Lynda used to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Alan?
I hope the minutes will show that Counselor Taylor was both humorous and laughing. My concerns are that are for the long-term record and the searchability over a long term. People have talked about, those are the two main things that I, I'm concerned about. And easy access to it. That system seems very accessible, especially if you can go from an item to item. If it, most items don't take that long, but some of them take quite a long time. So if it's, you know, a 45-minute or an hour-long item, it might be tedious to go through and figure out exactly where it is. That's where the, the minutes that we have would come in. Then you could figure out, oh, this is about halfway. So I could zip to halfway and start there. So you, I think the combination of the two is, is good. I'm not in favor of the verbatim minutes. I think that's, um, over the top. It would be too expensive for not very much benefit to the public. And then, so I'm, and I'm in favor of a happy medium where we have minutes that are maybe a little bit better than what we were doing before in terms of content and detail, but not to the extent that we're going to verbatim. That will allow us to then use the video to then go there. When people talk about why and intent, you can't get that from the written word on a piece of paper. You can get it a little bit better if you watch the video and see what they're talking about and how they're talking about it. But you still can't get to that stuff. So unless you actually talk to the person, so, uh, or they actually say it, then it's both in the written word and in the video. So I don't know that that's going to be very successful in terms of getting at intent and why. We'll still have that problem going forward for, forever until we get telepathy.
Far as you know.
Claire?
Yeah.
Unless the NSA is doing that now.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I do think, going back to what Chris started out with about the intent question, you know, if you run up into a dispute about what was meant by a certain piece of language or ordinance, you know, then having that written record, having the video record, I do think can be very important in terms of legislative intent. And I agree with a lot of what Alan said about this happy medium. I think we're, we're definitely still in this transition between using our pieces of paper and using our computer bits. And while that video search capacity is, looks very good and could be easily utilized by folks who can access the internet, there are still going to be people who are going to rely on our paper copies. And I think having the more robust minutes recorded and, and put into a paper format, whether that's downloaded from the internet or copied in the city hall, city manager's office, I think we're still in a place with our technology that we need to make those things available in, in both of those formats in order to be accessible to everyone in the community.
Betty, one more comment?
The last time I tried to look up something on the video, it kept saying, I, Mayor Pierce, he kept on, he said, welcome to the meeting. And I'd go a little ways and then she'd say, welcome to the meeting. And, and I got really frustrated. And that wasn't that long ago. And I don't know what, I just finally gave up.
So, um, we have enough information to work on. You have a sense of that and everybody can follow up with Sarah if you need something more, more explicit to go on. So why don't we go on to the next?
So I don't have anything else in section one. I'm going to move on to section two unless somebody else has a question or item. All right.
Excuse me, just process. I have a, a fifth point, I guess, that I would want to talk about. So is that at the end here? Is that what we're going to do?
Well, I'm going to go through sections. So if there's, if your point falls into one of these sections, if it doesn't, then it could just go.
Then we'll bring it up at the end if we haven't covered it.
Well, I just, I, I wasn't going to go through it specifically unless somebody had a question about it.
I have a question of whether we should go back to two hours for the noon meetings. We used to have two-hour meetings at noon.
Our meetings for which?
For the, for the, for these work sessions, the Wednesday work sessions?
Yes. 11:30 to 1:30. Do we, they were changed for Gary.
Discussion on that, Claire?
Um, this is going to sound really self-serving. I would be in favor of that if we could eat our lunch during the meetings.
We did eat our lunch during the meetings.
Trying to get here by noon and, and be, you know, have the food I need in order to have a good attention span is a challenge right now that we're not allowed to eat in this room. Not that I want to be eating on television, but, you know, it's a practical concern, so.
And we used to eat during the meetings.
Yeah. So Counselor Taylor is remembering back when we had our own city hall, our own meeting rooms.
We can do that in our own city hall.
So, and I guess my other thought is, as we were having casual conversation before the meeting started, you know, I think having that tighter timeframe in some ways makes us work more efficiently. So I do have a little bit of a concern that if we just start to expand our meetings by that extra half hour, we're, we're not necessarily going to work smarter. We just have more chance to, you know, pontificate maybe.
Any, any other comments on that? Alan?
Yeah, just speaking personally, having a full-time job plus breaking out for an hour and a half is difficult. Breaking out for two hours in the middle of the day is, would be very difficult. So unless we were doing what Claire said, because I spend half an hour eating. So if we were able to do that, then that would make a difference to me. But can't do that in this room.
Okay. Chris, thoughts?
I, I am an advocate for quality over quantity. And so to me, the length of the meeting is not as critical as staying on task and focusing and get the work done. And I think you could probably do that in an hour and a half as, as easily as two hours. Which does raise an additional point, which we maybe don't have to talk about today, but I'll get it in the parking lot, which is if we have a full agenda and there's a lot of good work and important work that needs to get done, where in the agenda should the public forum occur? Because on some nights, if you've got 60 people show up, we can't get the city's work done because we take up two hours with public forum. And public forum is important. And so to me, the length of the meeting is not as critical as staying on task and focusing and get the work done. And I think you could probably do that in an hour and a half as, as easily as two hours, which does raise an additional point, which we maybe don't have to talk about today, but I'll get it in the parking lot, which is, if we have a full agenda and there's a lot of good work and important work that needs to get done, where in the agenda should the public forum occur? Because on some nights, if you've got 60 people show up, we can't get the city's work done because we take up two hours with public forum. And public forum is important. But at what point in the agenda should it be placed if there's important time-sensitive things that need to be done? So it, some sort of a conversation about how we can make the agenda able to accomplish the city's needed work and still be able to accommodate a public forum and what that should look like and how it should work.
I'm very interested in that conversation and maybe that's a whole separate conversation for us to explore about the meeting schedule and how they're structured. So maybe we can put that on our list of things to deliberate. Yeah, yep, it's a good one. Betty?
I think the public forum should come first. People came to speak. I also wish we could go back to having items from council at the beginning of every 5:30 meeting, which we used to have.
Okay. I, so let's do a, move forward on this. We can discuss length and kinds of meetings in another, in another session. We can appropriate some time for that and have conversations in the meanwhile about what people really want and need. Mike, you've got one more.
Yeah, I, maybe the thing that I wanted to bring up fits in here. If it sounds like we're going to have another work session on this topic specifically, is that what I'm hearing? Yes, or no?
Yeah, I think we would devote, yes, we could devote more.
It sounds like it would be a sort of a follow-up to the process session, sort of a part two of the process session that focuses very specifically on the form of the meetings, it sounds like, timing.
Mine fits into that a little bit in that we've, there's an issue on which we've dealt with it multiple different ways over the last few years, and I'd like to see the body have a consensus about how we deal with motions from counselors that are not a part of the regular agenda. So if, you know, Claire, Betty, you know, it's me, if anybody has a motion that they want to make at the next day's meeting or at a meeting particularly, for example, one of the things that's happened in almost all cases, I think, in the last two years, almost all cases, is that if someone gives intent to make a motion out in an email in advance of the meeting, even if it's just a few moments before the meeting, that's usually then moved to the head, to the first item on the agenda and the first part of the meeting as items used to be. So when we would address such a thing and how we would get, how counselors could bring motions that are not a part of the agenda on is something I think we should talk about the rules for.
Alan?
Mine's related to that, which is the way that we deal with, with resolutions, which for some reason just all of a sudden pop up and, and the same as they can with a motion and they don't, and they just get on the agenda if someone wants to put them on the agenda. I think that's kind of an oddity in the way that we deal with them that I think we should talk about as well.
So Glenn, are there any, do you have any thoughts to share on this in terms of meeting structure?
It's clearly a policy matter.
Okay.
Normally, I would say that the mayor, as the presider of the meeting, you have the discretion and Mayor Piercey exercised her discretion oftentimes to let those motions come first. From a practical point of view, a staff point of view, sometimes that was challenging because staff would have prepared AISs, there would have been work sessions scheduled, maybe it was time-sensitive, maybe it wasn't. But then one counselor said, "I'd like to talk about this." It didn't go through a work session poll. It just popped up on the agenda and then it, sometimes those took two minutes. Sometimes they wound up with 45-minute discussions. So how the council does it, I think it makes a lot of sense for you to talk about how you want those things to be treated. It may be, you can differentiate between, well, this is just a motion that really is, everybody's going to agree it takes three minutes. If it's something that is going to take a substantial amount of time, the question that I think you should be asking yourselves is, why should that be getting on your agenda even though most items don't get on your agenda unless there's a council poll and four of you say it should go on? So I think there are a lot of factors that can weigh into that. And so having that conversation be part of your, part two of your process session makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. So we'll, we'll schedule a separate conversation around that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's what I wanted, yeah.
Okay, onward.
So nice segue, because the next item we wanted to talk about was the council poll. And it's kind of outlined, the process of how items get on the agenda is outlined in your agreements, and maybe you want to pick this up later, but I'll just kind of highlight a couple of questions. So in front of you is the work session request form. And typically what happened in the past is whenever a council had an item they wanted to talk about, Counselor Evans is a great example, he did this today, sends a poll that says, here's what I want to talk about. And normally they would work directly with staff. Beth would work to get this form filled out and send it to the rest of you for your vote. And the agreement also says you have five days and at the end of five days, if you have four people, it goes on the agenda within a week, onto the radar. So one of the questions in clarifying items we have is, it's not necessarily happening this way anymore. I think there's so much happening on email and sometimes here at the table that it's difficult sometimes to know, was that a poll or was that not a poll? So for example, Counselor Evans was the model in terms of putting in the item, why you want to talk about it, what the questions are, what the outcomes are. But then it was sent out to the mayor and council email list and not to staff. And so it's unclear who's counting those votes. So when you send that out and say...
I thought I, maybe I did.
Yeah.
I thought I got everybody in that.
Right. So what would normally happen is Beth would send that out to people and then you would reply to her and she would count those votes and then we put it on the agenda after five days. So the one question is, do you want to keep doing that? Do you want to have us do that or do you want to change your process so that you're emailing it out and we're just tracking it? It gets a little bit confusing because sometimes people will reply to you and sometimes they'll reply all. And we're trying to maintain a record and make sure we have the four votes. So we just want to reconfirm that that's the process you want to follow. It doesn't necessarily have to be on this form, but I will say, as somebody who has frequently had my initials next to work session items, it's, you'd be surprised how often we use these forms, especially when your agenda gets busy and you start bumping things either because an emerging priority has come up or because there's an absence or an ice storm and we get farther away from the initial conversation. We use this a lot to understand what was the intent of the work session, what are the questions we're supposed to be answering. And we also use it as a way to make sure we quickly get it assigned to the right staff team. So this is super helpful for us, even if it's in an email, it doesn't have to be on, on the form. That was one piece. The second piece is, is five days enough? And what happens at the end of the five days? If we extend it to five or whatever the day, is it expired? Or it doesn't explicitly say that? So sometimes if we don't get the votes in at the end of five days, it's unclear to us, does that mean the item is dead? And I think you've never really said that, so we end up making phone calls and emails and trying to determine if that was something you meant to vote on and just didn't. So that's a lot of stuff.
George?
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea to have a focal point for work sessions, and you laid it out perfectly, Sarah. So I, I do think that the polls should come out from Beth's office, whoever that might be at that time. As far as requesting a poll, I know we've all probably done it during a work session. We request a poll be sent out on X, Y, and Z. And then sometimes it comes from Beth and sometimes it comes from the counselor that said that at the meeting or both. So we need to get consistency on that. I think a single focal point is the best way to do it, so there's no surprises to the counselors or the staff. And somewhere along the line, we started using no vote as a yes, I guess. Is it the other way around?
No.
Okay. So I disagree with that. I think it needs, you need to have, you need to have at least four votes one way or the other.
But...
And if, if counselors are not that engaged that they will submit a vote on a poll, whether it be a yes vote or a no vote, then I don't think they need to be here. I think you should at least say, yes, I'm willing to talk about this, or no, I'm not willing to talk about this. Now, I can understand, I've missed a couple myself, whether they got misplaced in a packet. In fact, last week's packet, I emptied it out and I had a tentative work agenda fall out of the packet from November of 2015. That got stuck in there somewhere. So, you know, I've missed a few, but on a regular basis, if you're not, if you're not taking the energy to pick this thing up and mark X and submit it, then why are you here?
Hang on, Betty. I have Claire next and Alan and then Betty.
Thank you. I think the form is good. I like, you know, the content there. And I agree with counselor polling that we should have a single staff focal point for sending it out and gathering the responses. I think one of the challenges with the five-day timeframe is, is that five days from when it arrived in our email inbox or is it five days from when it came in our council packet for those of us who still get our council packet at home? So then there becomes this timing discrepancy. And did I respond to that via email or am I doing this one on paper? We don't, I don't think we get so many of these that that confusion will be there, but in terms of timing, I think we need to figure that out. I would be happy with some kind of timeframe that says, you know, you either get the votes by this date or you don't. And then if you don't and you still want to try to have it, then you resubmit the work session request. I don't have a problem with that. I just want us to be consistent. So I would recommend it would be five days from the date that arrived in the council packet, if we choose to have that timeframe on it.
Okay. Alan?
I agree that this should be a single focal point. It should be Beth and that if you want to put one of these polls out, send it to Beth. You can tell everybody you're doing it, but make sure Beth, then, then the official poll is Beth sending it out and then she can track what's going on with that, otherwise it'll get too confusing. Having helped create this form years ago, the intent was, and seeing how different people fill this out with different degrees of detail, the intent was so that when you get one of these polls, you understood why someone was putting this out, what are they talking about, what are the outcomes they're trying to look at? If it's purely just questions, maybe there's four questions that they want answered or discussed and put those out. Sometimes I've seen polls that are one sentence long and I had no idea what, what the, what the work session is really going to be about. So having filled them out with a little bit more detail, I think is really helpful for me when I vote on them. But I think for staff in particular, when it, when it does get passed, okay, what are we going to do with this agenda item? And having detailed questions is probably very, very helpful to them, I would suspect. So I think having it filled out a little bit more detail is a great idea. I mean, you could send the questions and bullet points to Beth and Beth can put it in the form because the form's a little clunky, but that would be too good. That would be really good to have more of that on there. I think five days is too short. I think it should be more like two weeks. And maybe it's two weeks, but after five days, staff sends out, here's the vote on this, there's five more days left. If you haven't voted on it, here's your friendly reminder halfway through. And then, and then by the end of two weeks, the vote is done. That gives folks time to respond to it.
Okay. Betty?
Okay, I agree, longer than five days would be good, but I think it would be helpful, and I don't know how difficult this is, to just talk, send an email to the counselors who have not voted yet. Sometimes one comes out, says, we don't have enough votes yet or we, some of you haven't voted. And I think if I already did it, I think, did I do it or didn't I? Because usually I do it as soon as I get it. And so I think in lots of cases, it'd be helpful just to send emails to the people who need to be reminded of something instead of to everyone.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I agree, there should be a central focal point. This process is not going to work unless we all know where it's going and how it's working. I'm willing to also go for a longer period of time, but I think the reminder would be a very important one. And I think something should not be scheduled using this process unless it receives four affirmative votes, period.
Yeah.
And we can work as hard as we can to try to achieve a vote one way or the other, but it requires four affirmative votes to get on, which means sometimes the temptation is there to kind of just not respond because you don't want to deal with the issue and say, I'll let it die from a lack of my participation. But George reminded me, we're not allowed to abstain. And so as city counselors, we should give a response one way or the other and indicate where we are on this particular issue. So you actually helped shape my thinking a little bit, and I think we should feel it's our obligation that if we can't give an affirmative vote, we should at least say no, and you can give the reasons why. A second element would be if somebody proposes something and puts their reasons down and all the other stuff, which I agree is very helpful, an additional piece that would be helpful would be to know, is this going to be something that represents a large amount of staff time, a moderate amount of staff time, or a minimal amount of staff time? Because part of my decision on whether to go for it or not would be based on, do we have the time and the resources to work on this issue? And I know to some degree we have that with, is this a priority issue or is it time-sensitive or not? But time is only one of the dimensions for this. I think resources is the other. And it may be that we say, you can put this down on the time list, but it's still going to suck up a lot of money if we do it. And I know some of us have been frustrated in the past getting four yes votes and it goes on the agenda at some indeterminate point in the future with an unknown amount of money and resources, which can be very frustrating. So I think it would be helpful to say, we think this would be a pretty time-consuming issue and it would also be a fairly resource-intensive issue. And that would, to some degree, guide me in terms of not whether I think it's a worthwhile issue, but can we deal with it right now? And there may be an option out here that says, I don't vote for it at this time, but let's bring it back up later. In other words, a parking lot option.
Right.
That says, I don't reject this because I don't like the idea, but I can't vote for it now because I, I just think it's too much for us right now. Bring it back to us later on. Maybe would be a way to help also get us to say one way or the other.
Okay. I, I just want to interject one other variable, which we can talk a little bit later in the meeting, but one of the things that I've talked about with most of you is the possibility that we might designate one month out of every quarter to be thematic, in which the agenda would all sort of involve the same kind of issues. So for an example, we would say downtown issues. So we could say that the month of March, we were going to talk about downtown issues. And so that, that might guide a little bit some of this polling, it might have an impact there. And it's just a way of, of thinking about the prep time also, that things could be prepped. So I'm going to plant that seed, but we'll come back to it and let Sarah finish going through this process.
Okay, so we'll modify based on what we've heard. I've generally heard 10 days or two weeks is acceptable to most and with a mid-week, mid-time reminder that you have X amount of days left and with bold letters of who hasn't voted yet.
A week is actually seven days.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
Of course, it's working days. This says working days, so I assumed you wanted 10 working days.
Working days.
Yeah. Great. So my intent was to go through this section by section just to see if you had questions. But it sounds like we're going to do a follow-up, so I don't know that I need to do that. I would just point out in 3.05 committee reports and items, we do have new committee assignments and I think you're going to talk about this items committee report item maybe later. So I just wanted to point that out. I think we left those at your seat, so you would know what they are. And then, well, we have a lot of stuff on conduct at meetings. Let's just get started there. I'm kidding. I don't have any, we don't have any other items until the very last one, and I can just tell you what that is because I don't think you'll, you're going to nod your heads. It's at the number 12, council chamber and McNutt Room seating assignments. When we do this, we're just going to change that to council chamber and work session seating assignment so that it can follow you to whatever room you go to.
Great, great. And Alan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, it's back on, on section two, placing items on the council agenda. It's two issues, one about scheduling items on the agenda. I know that on the tentative work, tentative, working agenda, we, if it's not yet scheduled, it goes into that parking lot box at the end, but I find that they tend to stay in that box way too long. And I think there needs to be some kind of guideline about how fast they get on the agenda. I think that maybe three or four months is appropriate, but I've seen stuff linger on there for a long time. So that's one issue. The other issue is follow-up on an issue. For instance, the nuisance ordinance is a good example, which is finally coming back, but it was brought up a year ago and we talked about it about six months after that. And then it kind of got lost in the shuffle and now we're bringing it back up. And, and there's no tracking mechanism for follow-up on meetings where we say, yeah, let's talk about this again. So they don't, they just fall off the screen completely. And unless someone says, oh, yeah, what about that? Or staff brings it back up or the mayor does, they get lost. So there, I think there needs to be another box, maybe that says, follow-up meetings on already talked about items, so we know that we're, that we're tracking them at the So we know that we're, that we're tracking them, and they need to get on the agenda. I think that will help city manager and the mayor do the agenda planning better, too.
Okay. Great. Betty?
That reminds me of inclusionary zoning, which I guess is still coming up sometime. But I just wanted to say that Portland has adopted inclusionary zoning already.
Great.
And now, back to our program.
That was, that was all of our items.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, okay. Unless you have them, it sounds like.
So now I have a few. All right, let me get my list. I have discussed a couple of pieces with you, and some I think are quick, and then some we might want to talk about a little more completely. The first thing is that I've mentioned to all of you, and I have said it in my State of the City address, that my intention is to canvass in each of the eight wards every four months. So that essentially means designating a place and a person to go with me in two wards every month. So I want to put that out. I've talked about it with most of you individually. I want to sort of open that to discussion if people have concerns about that. And then I think I will probably suggest that Elena Domingo, my assistant, and she can wave, would help sort of begin to schedule those. I'm thinking that it would be either a sort of a midday Saturday or a Sunday afternoon. But it could be another time, and during the warm season, it could be later. So are there any reactions, thoughts? Does that sound workable to you?
I want June and July.
Betty?
Oh, I think it's a good idea, and I already did it with you once. My niece, who came down from Portland to attend the State of the City, said, how can she do that? And I said, well, she doesn't mean she's going to every house in the ward, just sampling. And I think that it can be done. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I like the idea of canvassing. And something else which could be done, too, would be to have, well, for lack of a better word, we call them house parties. Where somebody within the ward invites a number of their neighbors and friends. And that way, you can get a number of folks in one setting. You're not necessarily having to do a lot of walking, but it can be also a very focused conversation. So in addition to canvassing, I think the notion of having gatherings within the ward, it could be in a school, or in somebody's home, or something like that, would be a good idea.
That's a great idea. And especially if the weather continues to be awful like this might be helpful. Did you, any other comments on that?
Alan?
Well, I kind of like that idea, although I kind of use the neighborhood meetings for those kind of things. I request to be on the agenda for all the neighborhoods that I'm in, and I do a council update, and I walk through what we're talking about, and ask, and people ask me questions about, and, and I respond to them. It usually takes about a half an hour or so. So it's a very good way to do that. And in, in, in terms of keeping contact with my constituents and finding out what they're thinking. And maybe the mayor could do the same thing, where you request some time on the agenda of different, and walk through a lot of the neighborhood meetings. At least in my neighborhood, in my ward, the neighborhood meetings have 40, 50 people at them. So there's quite a number of good attendance. So it's a good way to get at people and get at what they're, what they're thinking about.
Claire?
I, I support the idea of the canvas and would be happy to participate in that. I agree, the neighborhood meetings are a great way to connect. Unfortunately for me, one of my neighborhood association meets on the same night as council, and another one meets at the same time I have a committee assignment. So that makes it challenging. So I've tried to find other ways to connect with those neighborhood leaders. But that still doesn't help me connect with the rest of the folks who might show up at those meetings. So, yeah, that's.
Yeah, okay, great. Betty?
I think the neighborhood meetings is a good place. And not only does it let people communicate with the counselor and the mayor at times, but it helps to invigorate the neighborhood, which I think is a good goal to, if they know that the mayor's going to be there, or their counselor's going to be there talking about something, they're more likely to go to the meeting.
I will just follow on this, which is, I do love going to neighborhood meetings, and I have been going, and I will continue going. But there is a kind of a narrow bandwidth of people who actually attend those meetings. And my goal in canvassing is to really reach out to parts of the community that don't participate in any other way, and make it easier for them to share their thoughts with me. So I would use, rely all on you as councilors and on those neighborhood leaders to really guide my steps, to say, this is the, this is the couple of blocks that really, you know, they have a grievance, or they have a concern, and where they've had a crisis, and they really just need to be reassured. So that is my goal. So I think all, all things work, but I really do want to schedule the canvassing specifically.
I want to clarify, I wasn't saying that was instead of canvassing. I meant it was, I was responding to Chris's suggestion of house parties. And I think the neighborhood meetings would be better than that. But I think the canvassing is an excellent idea.
Terrific. So thank you. We will follow up with you. And then that segues right into my next piece, which is that I would like to have one-on-one short meetings with each of you every month. And I'm recognizing that time is an issue. I'm beginning to realize how much of an issue it will be for me, and I know it is for you. And so these do not necessarily have to be long, hour-long things. It could be that we would say, we have a 15-minute check-in. And it's an opportunity for me to check in with you if either there's something happening in council that you want me to know about, or if there's something in your ward that I really should be attuned to. And it could just be that it's the conversation about where we're canvassing. But I would just like to have that touchstone, so I begin to build that working relationship with each of you, and kind of understand what you're thinking about and what your priorities are. So if that is, you know, here are your reactions, if you, if you're okay with that. Again, I will turn to my most able sidekick, Elena, and have her connect with you. Any comments on that?
Excellent idea. I think sometimes it might take more than 15 minutes. But I think it's really important that you keep in touch with each counselor and hear what each of us is, is thinking.
Right. Perfect. So we'll try and set that up, so that's a regular thing, the whatever, you know, every Tuesday at whatever time. So thank you so much for that. I really look forward to that. And I think it'll hopefully help us keep moving forward on all kinds of things. Okay, the next piece is my, what I introduced earlier, is this idea of monthly themes. And what I am thinking about in this is that the idea of having a theme where, let's, let's take downtown, because there's so many pieces to downtown. So we can talk about public safety, we can talk about public spaces, we can talk about city hall, we can talk about fiber optics. There, there's a whole, we can talk about the farmer's market, whatever. There's a whole group of things. And that if we were able to designate a month in which all of the work sessions were essentially going to deal with some aspect of downtown, it gives us the option, first, of creating some, a continuity of conversation, just as you experienced in the city hall conversation, where the, the staff were able to provide you with a packet. And then you could sort of keep that conversation going and avoid this problem that Alan referred to of, where staff has to spend the first, you know, 10 or 15 minutes of a meeting reminding you of what the conversation was five months earlier on a topic. This way, we, there's a sort of a more consolidated packet that you get that has most of the information you need. We keep referring to that information throughout the month. And I am thinking that for the public, it will be easier for them to track certain things. That in my mayor's monthly report, I can say to the public, March is downtown month. If you're tracking a specific issue downtown, this is your month to really pay attention. That I'm thinking that it might make more sense for folks. So what I'm tossing out to you for your reaction is, could we try it once and see how it feels? Without committing to doing this forever, writing it into the operating agreements, let's give it a try once and see if it's, see if it's helpful. And so, Mike?
I like the idea that we're trying to add a little bit more kind of cohesive framework understanding about how we are intentionally addressing issues that pop up before the community. My only concern is that, it's my experience, that we, we fight for time. There's so much going on all at one time, and there are so many things that become time-dependent. And then one issue can become suddenly much more time-dependent than it was before, based on some action or some event. And, and it could give us either one of two negative potential outcomes of inability to address timely issues in a timely way, or ending up confusing people because we don't get to those things that are scheduled to get to, because timely things bump them out. And my, like I said, my concern is, having seen this for a while, that we end up, you know, like, I'll have put in, I, there are two items coming up here in a few weeks that I put in as work session polls, finally, with Beth's, with Beth's help, some time ago. But, and they've been bumped a couple of times, and that's natural and normal. But we're finally kind of getting to them from, I think, our initial conversation of six to eight months ago.
Right.
So I, I, I'm not sure how, how that structure would work, I guess.
I hear you. I think that's really important. We don't want to bump some issue that's been waiting for a long time. And that's the reason to have a conversation about what might be the first month when we would do that, so that we would avoid that. I also think that we will definitely have to schedule some flexibility for ourselves, because there are those things that are urgent, or that emerge all of a sudden, or that are on the calendar for a specific deadline. So it wouldn't necessarily be all of every work session devoted to that. We would factor that in. And that would be part of the learning curve of sort of trying it once and seeing if that creates more complexity or less. If it becomes more complex, then we'll know when we try it. Other, see, George?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. In a perfect world, I guess this would work. But as we all know, this is not a perfect world. And sometimes we're in more of a reactive mode instead of proactive. And I just think it'd be more confusing to the public if we're saying, okay, this, this is going to be city hall discussion time period. And maybe we're at a point in the city hall discussion that we don't need to talk about it, and something else is, comes up, or something more important comes up. I just, I, I see us trying to spin too many plates. I mean, we're spinning enough as it is, but if we try to line them up perfectly, I think that's where we're going to get in a little bit of a problem. I just have some concerns about trying to do it that way.
Emily?
I like the idea of a theme in many ways, but also I worry about missing something if, if it's the whole time. So one question is, is usually the work sessions are split into two topics. So would both of those topics be about downtown? One idea is maybe half of each Monday work session is devoted to other things. That would only be twice a month, half of, you know, 45 minutes each. And would give the continuity of Wednesdays are always on the subject. That's just my idea.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, ooh. Claire, and then Chris, and then Betty, and then Greg.
Thanks. I like Emily's suggestion. And, you know, I'll defer a little bit to the more senior members of the council who've been through this, these processes a lot, a lot longer than I have. So I share some of that concern about just management. And I guess my other concern would be that if we say our, our theme for March is downtown issues, that folks might think, well, then you're not going to talk about downtown again after that. You know, so we'd want to be clear that, no, that doesn't mean that. That just means we've concentrated the, the topic for this month. I like the idea because we do deal with so many disparate topics, that having that focus and knowing that that's really what we're honing in on for that particular month can, I think, maybe make us a little more effective, I, I think, for myself, in terms of what we review and what we're considering. And we're not in a single meeting, turning on a dime to a completely different topic that now we have to wrap our heads around again, you know, with that quick 45-minute session. But I think in terms of the practical application, I think Emily might have a, a good suggestion with what she just mentioned.
Yeah. Chris?
Yeah, I think, I think putting it in that context that Emily and Claire were talking about is, is good. I love, for the sake of continuity, to be able to say, there are certain areas of discussion that we're going to really focus in on. I think it not only helps us, but it would very much be helpful to define where we are as a city on, in certain areas. And I think this list is good. But because so many issues are timely, or they have other reasons to be dealt with in a given time period, we, we always have to take them into consideration. So perhaps, in terms of these topics, not all of them require deliberation. There, there may not be a decision that needs to be made in a certain area. But there's always the need to inform and to be aware. And it may, to some degree, be what you're getting at, to say, we could devote this month to, to providing updates, information, and knowledge about this area. And if people knew in advance that March is going to be downtown month, and that we're going to be inserting over the course of that month, updates, knowledge, information, opportunities to talk about downtown, it doesn't have to interrupt the other important work we have to do. But it still allows us, and allows people to know that for March, you know, oh, I'm interested in downtown, so this coming March, I'm going to start paying a little more attention. Because, yeah, I don't, I don't want to interrupt what has, through experience, been a very busy agenda. But I, I'd like to keep the germ of the idea of letting people know what's happening. So from an informed standpoint, whatever we could do to provide organized continuity of information around these very important topics, probably would be a worthwhile engagement effort.
Betty?
My, my first inclination is, I don't like thematic things. And you start twisting things to make them fit in. But for down, the only one, and I think that I'm willing to try, the only one of these that I think we should designate as a month is downtown, because downtown is everybody's neighborhood. And everybody is concerned or should be concerned with what happens downtown. Emily's idea of having part of a meeting might work, but if you've been around very long, you've seen our topics run into the next, how many times have we said we'll postpone this? And we have staff members here waiting, and they, well, it's not going to happen today. We have some people who like to talk, I think. And I seem to be one of those today. But I usually don't do the full three minutes. And I think that you can't count on having any time left if you, in any one of these things about downtown, we could talk about for hours.
Okay.
But with the, I'm willing to say, try a month for that, if, with the, of course, provision that we might have to change it.
Right.
Thank you.
Greg?
I, I, I thought about this, your suggestion, a little bit here, and listening to some of the other comments around the table, particularly Chris's comments, I just don't feel like we should be locked into any specific box on any specific month, on any specific issue. The nature of our business is too fluid for that. I think I, I kind of divide this in my mind into, we have chronic issues that we deal with all the time that are not going to go away. It's like diabetes. It's not going away. You have to manage it. And then we have the other issues that come up, for instance, you know, like sanctuary city. Other issues related to homelessness or other things that require more immediate attention. I think it would be better if we had a monthly city report that was thematic, that went out. And not necessarily a organized, focused discussion, because I think that that puts us too much into of a straitjacket, as opposed to allowing us to be as nimble and as flexible as we need to be to respond to the issues that come before us on a regular basis, or even in a, you know, in emergency, in, in terms of a crisis situation, that, you know, a lot of times, I've been here four years, you know, crisis pops, pops up all the time. And not everybody considers their crisis as being your crisis or my crisis. So I, I think I would rather us be allowed to have the flexibility and fluidity to respond to issues as they arise, and understand that we have certain chronic issues that we're going to be grappling with for months and years, and that they're not going to go away overnight or easily. You know, ergo example, you know, our unhoused folks in our community, and some of the other issues that we continue to grapple with.
Alan?
Yeah, I like the general idea. But of course, if it's too rigid, it won't work, because there's so much that we react to, and it'll be confusing. So it needs to be kind of flexible. And we kind of already do this by default. I mean, if you were to look back, December would have been New City Hall Month, for instance. So it needs to be able So it needs to be able to, to change. And, and, and I think not scheduling out too far is actually a good thing. So saying next month is going to be, but don't schedule out nine months worth of stuff. And, and that allows us to then have that theme be related to what's really going on. Our agendas are very fluid and the items that we take up. I remember one of the first things that Mayor Piercey told me when I started on council was, don't worry about this agenda item because the next one's coming right at you. So just get rid of that one and go to this one because that's the way this happens on the council. You just react to a billion different things, one after another after another. So we do plan on things being on the agenda. We have deadlines that require us to have things on the agenda. And then we also react to things from the public and, and the concerns that are happening or things that are occurring in, 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 in the community, the sanctuary city being a great example of that. So that's reactionary. So I like the idea of a, a monthly report theme. That might be helpful. The other thing I thought of is that the theme might be helpful to help focus the full, public forums a little bit. Not to say that the public doesn't already do a really good job of focusing the public forums on themes. They do a great job at that. But maybe we took that concept of the chronic issues that we're constantly dealing with and said, on top of everything else, you know, this month is going to be a topic X. And, and if you want to talk to us about that at the forum, we'd be really appreciate that. That might make our forums longer, but, but I think that might be a good way to get at having a theme work for the month.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would help me to understand better the, the problem you're trying to solve or the goal you're trying to get at here. Is it, is it what I mentioned at first to be, to have a greater sense of intentionality, to have us, to have progress measured by, you know, us being able to say, here's how and when we deal with that? Because if so, from my perspective, one of the things we might try is that I, I think when I started on council, same time Alan did there, you know, 10 years ago, we, we, I think were more, council itself did more to develop and, and go in detail into specific goals. I think we're, and this isn't a, a good thing or a bad thing with regard to our interaction with staff, but I think council is more reactive now than it was, say, you know, eight, 10 years ago where we, we would have full day sessions discussing the, you know, six, eight very specific goals that we wanted to accomplish in the year and what that looked like. And I think maybe there's a happy medium here between the goal setting, I think we've talked about that we're going to do here, and our ability to be able to both report back on it and say, this is the month that we're really going to focus in on that goal. And I, and I think there might be some intersections there that makes sense. If, if all of us are clear on this is our intentional time to maybe not solve or make decisions only this time of the year on that issue, but this is a time we're going to spend extra time and, and dig a little deeper as to what, what our, our feelings and thoughts and guidance to staff would be on a particular goal.
Yes. I actually had a corollary thought about this, about the goals also. And so I completely agree. I think that it might be one way of our sort of addressing sort of more specific goals for the year. I wasn't thinking, just to respond, I was really thinking that this might make our conversations a little more specific and feel less fragmented, both as a council that we're jumping from issue to issue, but, but also from the public, that it would lend some clarity to the public. I am not thinking that we would talk about homelessness once and we'd never talk about it again, for example. I'm just thinking that there, there is a convergence of issues related to homelessness and there could be a single packet around the kinds of affordable housing options the city has, the kinds of funding things we have, the rental, tenant rental rights that there, those things fit together naturally and that we might be able to have a more continuous conversation if we thought about the agenda. And one way for me, the sort of takeaway I'm getting from you is that maybe I should think about this really more thematically than when I'm working with a city manager, sort of thinking about the agenda, that the extent to which we could bring things together, we will and maybe not lock the council into too much formality around March as downtown month. But when we think about the agenda, if we can bring things together so you feel like you're having a more continuous conversation, maybe that would, maybe that would work. And Chris?
Yeah, in fact, this turn that the conversation's taken, I think, is really good because like you and like Mike, I'm very keen for us to revisit our goal setting and, and priority setting and, and our intentionality discussion. This may actually dovetail with that really well because if you took the topics that you had on your list and said, how many of these do we have clear goals, objectives and achievable's around? Not very many, if any. And part of that's because we haven't had a goal setting session for a long time, but part of it is we haven't broken it out and said, this list of to-dos, where's the outcomes that we intentionally want to achieve with all of these? And so maybe to take your list and say, this is actually the deep dive list. And we say, we can't do it all in one meeting. But over the course of a year, we'll do a deep dive on every single one of these and say, what is the city Eugene through its policymaking bodies, goals, intentions, objectives and outcomes on every single one of these topics? I think it not only informs us, but it also lets the community at large know what the heck it is we're trying to do. I mean, I don't want to use drain the swamp because that's kind of been usurped, but
It's a good one.
It, it actually fits in this situation. What is it that we're really trying to achieve, particularly around all the topics you listed here? And so I would take your list and say, wow, let's make that our deep dive list. And over the course of the next year, let's schedule whatever we need to do to really get some stated goals, priorities, outcomes listed for, for these items. And to me, that would be extraordinarily valuable.
All right. Great, great. And Greg?
You know, I, I, I think that the idea has some merit if we looked at it instead of a monthly approach, a quarterly approach and that we group like items together. And that we look at, A, kind of having a report because more of this is not only for our internal processes as processing policy and moving policy forward, but there's also a communication linkage and a communication gap with the community. And what I mean by a gap is this, is that I get, you know, we all get emails all the time from people saying, what are you doing about this? What are you doing about that? Why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? And by, you know, having some clarity as to when there will be kind of a report back loop from mayor and council, city manager to the community and understanding that there will be some discussion about these specific topics so that people don't feel like it just disappeared in the ether somewhere. And I think that's what you're trying to get to, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, right.
So that if we did it on a quarterly basis with topics that are grouped in like categories, I think it might make more sense, more continuity and then give some clarity to the public about what direction council is taking in a policy context on these specific issues, particularly with the chronic issues. Because the chronic issues are always, you know, coming up and then people are not tracking necessarily where we are at with those issues. They kind of trust that we are tracking it because that's what they elect us to do, but that they have some idea that, you know, we are tracking these issues, there's some progression to this and it's just not something that's falling out of the sky from somewhere. And that we're just not reacting to a specific incident or crisis, but that we have, you know, a game plan around that particular issue. So I, I think that if we did it in a more, in a less prescriptive way, and the monthly thing kind of gives me the willies, but I think quarterly would be a little more palatable for me in terms of the way that I process things.
Good. Alan?
One of my concerns about doing this is, is a staff's ability to respond to the topics. Some people, the same people, and sometimes it's only one person, works on the, all of the issues within a topic. And if we say, to use an extreme example, okay, now your entire work plan for the year is going to occur next quarter. That might be problematic. And I know, for instance, you know, we don't have 15 people working on homeless issues. We have a select few people working on homeless issues. And to throw them, all of that stuff into, if we try to have them do too much, we're going to run into problems of being able to get through the issues. And so that's why sometimes when we schedule stuff, stuff gets scheduled way out because the person that's going to do that item is doing these three items that are already on the schedule and they can't do it until they get to there. So having that as a, as a background concern is, I think, real important. And any comments from staff about?
No, I appreciate that. I think the overall concept is worthy of taking a look at. I, I would have some questions, specific questions about because it does start to drive priorities for staff. And I appreciate you bringing it up. There are some staff members that spend lots of time and some issues take a lot longer and some, it's when they're ripe to actually come for a decision. So it may be if downtown month is March, but the reality of it is the decision really is ready in April. So you still want to be able to bring it back in April when March, you could have some of the conversation around it. And so I, so the, the overall idea feels pretty good and, and probably some nuances and we'll just have to kind of think through what that means from a staff perspective. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, because it is a, it could be an issue. Over my tenure, we've lost a lot of that capability. We've whacked that out of the city where measure 15, other different, measure five and things like that. We've, we've eliminated a lot of analyst positions. We don't have them anymore. So we, we make the, doer people do the analysts now, which is pretty common within, within the staff. So managing the workload's an important part of this.
Great. Claire?
Yep, thank you. I had meant to mention the concern about staff resources as well in, in my prior comments. So thanks, Alan, for bringing that up. I liked, Mayor, what you said about, you know, maybe another approach would be as in, in terms of developing the agenda, putting things together. I'm not coming up with the specific instance, but I know over the last four years, I've had some frustration when we were getting a presentation from staff who was responsible for a particular area and there was an intersection with another area and, but that staff person wasn't part of the conversation just because of how their work is structured. And, you know, so for example, our discussion around homelessness and emergency shelter and then our upcoming discussion about potential renter protection. I mean, those are very much related, but they may live in different parts of the administrative of how the city runs. And so I think, thinking about where those intersections are and making sure staff is thinking in terms of how they present that to us, where those connections can happen, I think will, will make us be able to leverage our resources more effectively.
That's, that's great. And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a perfect segue. That's starting on what I was going to bring up to say, you certainly, over the last year, have sat and, and watched all the meetings long enough to know that we occasionally, with great love in our hearts, refer to this young man as Captain Metaphor. And one of his favorites is, is whack-a-mole, right? When we, when we have discussions or make decisions about one topic, here it, it makes something else pop up over there. Over time, for me trying to, to have conversations that connect those thoughts is, has been really important to understand the connection pieces interdepartmentally or, or between separate kinds of issues. So I wonder, since this is a process session, if it wouldn't be interesting for us to begin some manner of, of systematic way of reviewing that. And, and I don't mean spend too much time on it, but just a quick hit. For example, we know with the tentative working agenda, what topics we're going to have out for several weeks. And maybe, and this is just, I'm just brainstorming here, manager and staff can probably come up with a much better way and more efficient way to do this. But what if we're going to have a conversation on a very specific topic and we're going to make decisions on a very specific topic? And so they have an AIS to build that has background and it has purpose and recommendations. Maybe another section on that AIS is intersecting issues. And so what they do is allow everyone in staff to at least take just a second, you know, before those AISs are completed to sit, to say, well, actually, my department intersects here. When they're going to talk and do something about that, there's going to be an intersection with this. And maybe it's just a sentence from that area that someone sends a note and it gets included on the AIS that somebody from this department thought that intersects here just so we can, even if we don't talk about it, we can be mindful of what we're doing has impacts and intersections in other parts of the city effort. So I was just thinking about that.
I, I, I appreciate that thought and I do want to just, we have just a few more minutes and I want to draw your attention to this, sort of the beginning of a spreadsheet because this is actually my proposed format that is my working mayor's monthly report data. And so part of what I think, and I hope it might address some of the points you all have brought up, which is I have already, I have grouped, they can be regrouped, it's just a spreadsheet. So, right, we can fix it, we can adjust it. It has a column for council action and this would be the living current, it's not a historical record, it's what the council most recently, when you most recently talked about it, what is the staff currently working on? The gritty part is the challenge column because that's the part in which we actually name it. Like, is it money? Is it staff time? Is we're waiting for a decision from the county? Is it, what is the challenge of actually addressing this issue? And then the timeline, and there are issues, quite a few of these issues as we go through that we don't have a timeline actually attached to it. And this is our way again of hopefully not losing track of what you've been working on because you, there are so many issues that come before you. And then finally, the public engagement piece. So it could be that this document begins to help us group things, it could be, it begins to help us track, and it could also be that it begins to help us have that sort of a goal planning, you know, what are, what are our priorities this year that we know we need to get done there really? We want outcomes, we want to be able to say at the end, this, this issue is at a certain level of resolution or progress. Yeah, Alan?
I really like the tracking part of this because it does respond to some of the other things like what happened to that item? We didn't ever follow up and it allows us to then track what's going on with it. And I'm glad you spent more than five minutes thinking about this. It kind of shows you did a little bit of thought about it over the last couple of months. I think this is really a, a good start.
I have one other, I'll, I'll say one other thing about this. One of the things that I have talked about with several of you and it could relate to this would be, and it relates to the Mike's comments about goal setting, is that we could also structure in, as we're thinking thematically or thinking about goals, about what specific workshops you want as opposed to work sessions. Workshops where you really do want to dive more deeply into some of these topics. You, you don't, it's not a time when you're having to position yourself to make a vote. It's a time when we're trying to make sure that collectively we're working with, with a solid body of knowledge about something. And you all face some pretty complicated issues and, you know, and we have a new counselor and you have a new mayor. So there might be some advantages to kind of being pretty intentional about that this year, about how we build our body of knowledge on some of those. So that would be another part and it could just be that we do that and that's part of our goal setting that, that possibly, depending on time, once a quarter, we have that, we have that workshop that involves a little addressing of the goals. Yes, Alan?
I, I like the idea of a workshop because it was confusing to me when I first got on council. Why is this a work session? It's no different than any other part of what we do. We just, so it's just, the work sessions, it's a 5:30 to 7:00 and the regular council meeting is from 7:30 to 9:30 or 10:00. And other than that, there, it's just a way to distinguish what time we started because we don't do anything different, it seems to me. If we did what, what you're talking about in a workshop, that's where we could bring in certified smart people and, and have them talk to us or, or local perspectives or point of view or local experts to talk about that. And, and then just, and that would be more of a discussion with no, with the intent of getting towards some kind of outcome, but not necessarily in that meeting. So I like the idea of workshops.
Betty?
Back to history, be about the same time we changed these meetings to an hour and a half. a half, we changed, we started voting at the meetings. When I was first on council 20 years ago, we did not vote during the work sessions. They were work sessions. Alan was around because he was on the Budget Committee then. And you remember that?
Yeah.
And then for some reason, we started voting at the work sessions. And I don't know whether that's a good idea or not.
Just they took away the good food they stuff.
Yeah, they used to have good food, too. Also, I'm disturbed a little bit about bringing in experts unless you check with everybody on the council, whom do you, I remember a workshop where I did not consider the people experts. They were all on one side of an issue and they were somebody's experts, but not mine. Thank you.
We have experts, they're called staff.
There we go.
I don't mean the staff.
So we have, we have two minutes, so I'm going to try and summarize where I think we are with this, which is that I will, working with staff, look at the agenda initially to just see how we can group some things. We thought we might end up, but it doesn't seem to me that we are, at a place where we 'd agree on a, on a theme, but I will take your, I mean, my original vision was, I thought you would just go for this idea, which that didn't happen, so that's my first learning curve.
We all have that one.
And so we had thought that we would need to sort of identify what that theme might be this first time, but I'm thinking we're going to be a little more loose in how we see the themes. We'll try to do some grouping on the agenda, we'll look at what the workshop should be, and come back with a conversation about what your preferences are around particular topics where you want to dive deep. In the meanwhile, I'll be working on this mayor's monthly report and the first one, you know, destined to come out in February. So, yes, Chris?
And let's schedule a goal-setting session as soon as possible.
We'll set, and we'll...
I don't know if we have a formal one scheduled.
It's not scheduled.
We have a Budget Committee meeting. But then we will schedule, though, it sounds like, a goal-setting. What we've done in the past is, we've often had those over a day and a half or two days. So what would be helpful would be at least some feedback, maybe we'll email something on how long you want this to be, is it a day or is it a two-day event? And so that would be helpful for us to know. Mike would like three days, it looks like.
One day.
I was just going to close the loop on the earlier conversation that I tracked a bunch of items that you want to have a second process session meeting around, your meetings and the Q and the forum and time and all that, so we'll follow up with that, too.
Okay. That is great. I think we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good meeting.
It's a new one. I got some gavel.